Mr. Cameron.
My lord, my lady, I have had a speaking note for myself and if your lordships would like to receive it, I have copies. If I can, I'd like to circulate them now.
Yes, please, thank you.
My lords, my lady, I start with some corrections and apologize for the errors, but I hope they haven't misled anybody to any great extent, some wrong paragraph numbers and the like. I'd like to start, if I may, with a very broad outline of the factual background. And the court has already heard from Mr. George in some detail about the background, but there are just some points of emphasis that I would like to make, and they're these, my paragraph three. This was a planning application to which Natural England, who are the statutory adviser on matters relating to nature conservation, took a very close interest in. They objected to the application, and I've given the reference for that letter. It was in response to that objection that the updated bat survey was prepared. Natural England considered the updated bat survey, and following that consideration, they withdrew their objection. And unless the court would find it helpful, I'm not intending to refer expressly to that letter at the moment, but it withdrew the objection. And Natural England's participation in the consultation process was included in the decision report that was put before members, and it was only after that process had been followed that the council decided to grant planning permission. This is not a case where the effect on bats has been somehow ignored, it was subject to the most careful consideration. The Court has already had its attention drawn to Regulation 3.4, the habitats regulations, and that is the 2009 version of the 1994 regulations, which was in force at the time that the committee made its decision, but they're the same provisions in the 2010 regulations. But in our submissions, the words of that duty are of particular importance. Shall have regard to the requirements of the habitats directive in so far as they may be affected by the exercise of those functions, and the "they" refers to the requirements of the habitats directive as found by Lord Justice Sullivan in the Friends of the Earth case. That was the duty, and it's, I'll come to this in a moment, but it's, the habitats directive in this country is not implemented just by Regulation 3.4, as your lordships and ladyships know. The strict protection is achieved by this requirement and by the requirement of the criminal law in Regulation 39, as it was, of the habitats regulations, which transposes the directive. So if you're somebody wishing to carry out a development, you have to get your planning permission, and you then have to consider Regulation 39 and, if necessary, obtain a licence. So that the stage that this court is considering is the planning application stage, of course, and not the licensing stage. I only put that as part of the background, and I will come in more detail, if I may, to that in a moment. The principal submission I make at my paragraph five is that Article 12.1b was not engaged on the facts of this case. And, as is absolutely plain, the difference between the parties turns on what disturbance means in Article 12.1b, and that is on the extent of the negative impact required in order to engage the prohibition. And I put it that way because acts are prohibited by Article 12.1b, and it's, the question here was whether the analysis set out in the detailed reports before the committee was sufficient to engage Article 12.1b. I turn now to the interpretation of Article 12.1b, and what I intend to do is to follow the questions for the court, so my three main headings are interpretation of Article 12.1b, extent of the duty imposed by Regulation 3.4 of the habitats regulations, and thirdly, discretion. In the respondent's case, and it's at paragraph 101, we have attempted to set out in writing our formulation of what is meant by disturbance in Article 12.1b. And as your lordships will have seen, ladyship, that attempt at definition is attacked in the appellant's supplementary case.
It might be proved if in the fourth line, instead of the word disturbance, which might be thought to beg the question, we had the word impact, wasn't it?
Well, my lord, yes, or even as I've done in that, in my text, in the note I've just handed in, just crossed out of the disturbance.
Oh, I see, I'm sorry, I hadn't seen you've changed it.
No, well, that was a response to the criticism made of it. So it's another attempt to assist the court, and that would have, having regard to the effect on the conservation status of the species.
Well, it is the effect of the impact, isn't it?
My lord, yes. And if I can just seek to explain the factors that have been taken into account in arriving at that wording, first of all, I'd like, if I may, to go to the European Commission guidance, and that is in volume four of the Authorities bundle. And it's at tab 44, if I've got my reference right, and as Mr. George pointed out to the court, the paragraph numbering in brackets is slightly confusing in this document because you get the same number repeated, but I'd like to go to pages 37 and 38, if I may. Page 37, paragraph 38. Paragraph 38 draws attention to the fact that disturbance under Article 6.2, with which we are not concerned, must be significant. That word does not appear in Article 12.1b. Then the guidance, and it is no more than guidance, reads on, "This does not exclude, however, some room for manoeuvre in determining what can be described as disturbance. It also seems logical that for disturbance of a protected species to occur, a certain negative impact likely to be detrimental must be involved." And that guidance played some significant, if I can use that word, part in the deliberation of the courts below. Turning over the page to page 38 and paragraph 39. "In order to assess a disturbance, consideration must be given to its effect on the conservation status of the species at population level and biogeographic level in a member state." And then there's the example, which the court's already seen. So in the view of the European Commission, consideration must be given to its effect on the conservation status of the species at population level, and that's reflected in the formula that we put before the court.
Does conservation status refer to established categories like endangered, threatened, rare, or if not, what does it mean?
My lord, the definitions are found in the directive itself.
Oh, it is defined in the directive, is it?
Well, there are, if I could just refer expressly to the directive, conservation is defined. And it's in, as is conservation status, it is defined.
Where's that defined?
That is Article 1, which is in tab 10 of Authorities' bundle, volume 1.
Tab 10, we're not, I thought we were looking at the directive.
Directive, yes, my lord.
Well, that's, I think, in Article 12, isn't it?
Oh, I apologize, it is 12, I'm very sorry. 12, and it's Article 1, and, I'm grateful, my lady, conservation status of a species means the sum of the influences acting on the species concerned that may affect the long-term distribution and abundance of its populations within the territory referred to in Article 2. And then it goes on, the conservation status will be taken as favourable when, and then the court can see the extended definition.
Sorry, so...
So it's at L, E is dealing with the conservation status of a natural habitat, but of species it's at L.
So what's at L?
My lord, the definition that I've just read out is at L. Is it I? Sorry, I apologize.
It's my fault, I thought it was an L.
Thank you, my lady. It's I, and it, yes, if one's got very good eyesight, you can just see the little dot on the top, and I just highlighted it. If L is dealing with something completely different.
Sorry about that.
So what is, what does the Commission say? In order to assess a disturbance, consideration, its effect on the conservation status, meaning its effect on the sum of the influence it is acting. It's a bit of a mouthful, isn't it?
My lord, it may say that the definition is a bit of a mouthful, but the reason, the reason that it's important is because if one looks at the aim of the directive, the aim of the directive is to, in Article 2, to contribute towards ensuring biodiversity through the conservation of natural habitats of wild fauna, that's habitats, and then species is in item two of Article 2. "Measures taken pursuant to this directive shall be designed to maintain or restore at favourable conservation status natural habitats and species of wild fauna and flora of community interest." And therefore, the definition which I am suggesting, although it does use the word conservation status, would reflect the aim of the directive. And the mouthful only comes in when one looks at the definition of conservation status. If I may also, I'd like to refer to the way in which Lord Justice Ward dealt with this matter in the Court of Appeal, and that's at Appendix 1, tab 2, page 22, if I've got my reference right. And...
Oh, paragraph what?
Paragraph 39, my lord. Page 22, the judgment. And there, in my judgment, whether the disturbance will have a certain negative impact which is likely to be detrimental, those are the words that come from the Commission guidance and which are latched on to by both parties in this case, must be judged in the light of and having regard to the effect of the disturbance on the conservation status of the species. And then Lord Justice Ward says, i.e. how the disturbance affects the long-term distribution and abundance of the population of bats. And that, in my submission, is the appropriate approach. It's also an approach which, alone for Mr. George, is made plain, that he does not seek to argue that effect of the, on, you take out of the disturbance, effect on the conservation status of the species is a relevant consideration.
Now, but what he says is that it's relevant, because if it affects their conservation status, then by definition it will constitute a disturbance, but it doesn't actually, the converse is not so, that's what he, that's how I understand his argu-
Yes, but, my lord, once it becomes relevant, it means you must have, and this is all I'm saying, you take it into consideration when assessing whether it is a disturbance.
You, Mr. George suggested that you had departed from the Court of Appeals analysis, which was a frolic of its own, but you don't agree, you're supporting the Court of Appeals analysis.
Well, my lord, I have to accept that my analysis is not the same as the Court of Appeals, and if, my lord, if you go to paragraph 37 in Lord Justice Ward's judgment, he records why I sought to persuade him that his analysis was not correct. And I don't seek to depart from that, it's paragraph 37 of Lord Justice Ward's judgment at page 22.
I mean, you disagree with the first sentence of 37, don't you?
Yes, that is the only, I do, and for the reasons which Lord Justice Ward sets out and I put before the Court of Appeal. But I am not submitting, and I should make it absolutely plain to this court, I'm not submitting that Lord Justice Ward was necessarily wrong, but I am submitting that the approach that he and the fellow members of the Court of Appeal took does face the difficulty which I identified and which he records at paragraph 37.
But I'm not sure, at all sure, either that your formulation avoids the difficulty or that the authors of this guidance document, who are, who, the Commission?
It's a Commission publication, my lord, yes.
The Commission are, in fact, agreeing with you, I think they're agreeing with the Court of Appeal. The only test they suggest is that consideration must be given to its effect on the conservation status, and they then refer to chapter 3.2.3a in paragraph 39, which, when you look at it, is dealing with derogation and the whole gist of, so they assimilate the tests, because the whole gist of Mr. George's argument is that the assimilation is fallacious, because if the same test applies under each, how would you ever get it, how would you ever need a derogation? The test is built into the primary question.
My lord, my, the position that I've taken before Honourable Judge Bidder at first instance, before the Court of Appeal, and now before this court, is that, is a position which is somewhere between the Court of Appeal's position and Mr. George's position. Mr. George's position is...
Well, I mean, I appreciate where your test is, but, I mean, actually, does your wording achieve, manage to achieve a halfway house? It is necessary to establish a certain negative impact likely to be detrimental for the species, having regard to the effect on the conservation status of the species. That suggests to me that the question, whether something is detrimental to the species, is to be decided having regard to the effect on the conservation status of the species, which is what, as I say, I think the Commission was saying, and which you actually disclaim. You say, having regard to the effect on the conservation of the species, status of the species, but even if there's no effect on the conservation status of the species, having regard to other things, unspecified.
Well, my lord, yes, it's a, it's not the only consideration, but it is a-
Having regard into alia.
Yes.
And it doesn't really very much help, then, to have, having regard to, because it's a slight false friend.
Well, my lord, I'm not sure that it is a false friend, because it is, if it is a factor you have to take into account, it gives the decision-maker who has to decide, is it a disturbance, one factor that he or she has to consider. And therefore, I go with Lord Justice Ward at paragraph 36 of his judgment, where he does refer to paragraph 39 of the guidance. And at paragraph 36, in the second and third sentence, he said, referring to Mr. George's submission, his difficulty is that that does not answer the critical question, when does the negative impact become detrimental? Paragraph 39 seems to me to spell out the proper approach, namely to give consideration to the effect on the conservation status of the species at population level and biogeographic level. And that is consistent with the formula that I'm putting before the court. It's only in the second, the first sentence of paragraph 37 that he goes so far as to say, for there to be a disturbance, within the meaning of Article 12.1b, that disturbance must have a detrimental impact so as to affect the conservation status.
So where were you reading, 37 of?
Of Lord Justice Ward's judgment.
37 puts it more strongly than 39, and you say 39 is correct and 37 is going too far.
36 and 39, yes, my lady.
If you use your formulation and answer the question posed, that it isn't likely to have a detrimental effect on the conservation status of the species, or isn't likely to have any effect on the conservation status of the species, does that answer the question whether the prohibition of Article 12.1b is engaged?
It helps one on the way to answering it, but doesn't give the answer in full, my lord.
It doesn't give the answer in full, so it's possible to say, no, it doesn't have a detrimental or negative effect on the conservation status of the species, but Article 12.1b may nevertheless be engaged.
Yes, my lord, on my formulation, yes.
But what are the circumstances in which, absent an effect on the conservation status of the species, will Article 12.1b be engaged?
Well, one might hypothetically, my lord, have a great preponderance of a particular species in a particular area, so that the fact that you disturb or carry out an act which has an impact on, without falling into the error that I've fallen into already, so it has an impact on a great number of that species, but because there are so many of them, it doesn't affect the conservation status, it might nonetheless be a disturbance. But what it emphasizes, my lord, is that disturbance has to be considered on a case-by-case basis, because there's a vast range of species which are protected by this prohibition. Like I say in the, draw attention in the respondent's case, the fact that it goes from a grey wolf to a bivalve mollusk, and there are, those species are going to be disturbed by different acts, and that's why you can't have a clear and straightforward formula which applies in every case, it's because the range of species are so great. In this country, and I'm jumping ahead, there is a solution to that in terms of the regulations, and in the 2009 version of the 1994 habitats regulations, and I'm going to Authorities' bundle 3, tab 37, and to Regulation 39.12. And what Regulation 39.12 does is to provide the guidance as to the application of the offences in paragraph 1b or d, we're concerned with b, in relation to particular species of animals or particular activities may be published by certain authorities, and then over the page at Regulation 39.13, in proceedings for an offence under paragraph 1b or d, the court shall take into account any relevant guidance published under paragraph 12. So therefore, the domestic regulations cater for the fact that there's a wide range of different activities which could amount to a disturbance in different circumstances. Now, the court will ask, well, let's see the guidance, well, at the moment, no guidance has been published under this, and the court will have seen in the DEFRA letter that they say that they're waiting for the outcome of this case.
The criminalization of infringements is required, is it under the directive?
My lord...
Is it something which says that they shall have, you know, the usual provision, you shall have condine sanctions, does it say that somewhere?
Not, not that I'm aware of, my lord. It just requires strict protection, but in this country, that strict protection is given by making it a criminal offence.
So that's a, an English, a British choice.
Well, what does Europe mean when it says prohibiting?
Lady, yes, I can't see how else it would be prohibited unless there was some sanction, but...
Usually it says that there should be appropriate sanctions, but I can't see the...
As I've already answered, I'm not aware of it, but I am aware that since the 1994 regulations came into effect, there has been a criminal offence.
Is that relevant to the construction of Article 12, that we're concerned with something which impliedly, at least Europe has said, should be a domestic offence, and which one should therefore construe on two bases, firstly, it should be certain to comply with the European Convention on Human Rights, and secondly, in case of doubt, it should be narrowly construed? Rather contrary to the thrust of Mr. George's argument, which is that you should, these should be broadly protectively.
My lord, I don't seek to dispute Mr. George's analysis that the treaty gives high priority, I'll just make sure I get the right words. At Article 191, and I'm looking at tab, this I am looking at- and I'm looking at tab, this I am looking at tab ten of volume one, union policy on the environment, Article one nine one two, shall aim at a high level of protection, taking into account the diversity of situations and so on, which will be based on the precautionary principle. So that is, that the aim of the European approach is high priority, but, once it comes to creating a criminal offence, it would appear that if a restriction is being placed on the activity of people, that the normal approach, I accept, would be to construe that strictly.
Has anyone had a look at the proposal from the Commission, the opinion of the European Parliament and the opinion of the Economic Social Committee which led to this? Have we got all those?
We've got, we have, my lord, if I can just turn to the index, it was included, thank you very much, I'm very grateful, tab forty-three, which is in bundle four. And a particular provision is on page four. Oh, sorry, sorry, lots of page fours, are there? Well, it is roughly four pages in, there isn't a four at the top of it, but there's a five at the top of the next page. And...
Sorry, what are we looking, we're looking at article...
Twelve one B, my lord. And there, deliberate disturbance, particularly during a period of breeding, rearing and hibernation insofar as to certain, now, this is, the original version had the significant in and it was taken out.
What was the debate which led to it being taken out? Was it part of the interchange with the Parliament?
My lord, I don't know, is my answer to that, but...
Well, I suspect if this were being construed in Europe, people would find out, wouldn't they?
My lord, yes, the, this was put before your lordship, so that, in particularly in relation to the significant, that was taken out, but I...
The question is why, and, I mean, in the ordinary corpus, you would expect to find that somewhere in the process of arbitrage between the Commission, Council and Parliament.
My lord, yes.
But looking at this twelve one B, it strikes me, as has struck me throughout the day, that significant, just in the air, is almost meaningless, something is significant only in a context. And the wording here was significant in relation to the objectives of this directive, and it seems to me that whether significant is there or not, it can only be meaningful in a context.
Well, my lord...
You needn't comment on it, it's just a...
Mr George also suggested to us that significant had a particular European meaning which might be different from the meaning that we would, in other words, a stronger meaning, might be different from the meaning that we would give it in England and Wales.
As I understood Mr George's submissions, and I, they were these, that he was dealing with the meaning of likely in the European context, particularly in relation to the Waddensley case, his use of the word significant, and certainly in his written case, is a reference to the use of the word significant in the context of the environmental impact assessment regulations, directive and regulations, where the requirement is to assess significant effects, and that, in that context, it is in fact, on the guidance, a matter of judgement whether something is significant.
Well, that one would expect.
Yes.
But the question is, does significant mean more than a little, or does it mean a lot? For example, significant can mean so many different things.
Well, lady, in relation to, Mr George, if I recall, was referring to it in this context.
I mean, do, I'm sorry, are you in the middle of an answer?
Well, I was going to try and answer.
I'm terribly sorry, forgive me.
You're trying to answer a maybe irrelevant question, but nevertheless, I needed to know.
I apologize for going rather slowly.
It's my turn.
The significance in the context that Mr George referred to it was in relation to the preparation of environmental statements, where the effects, significant effects have to be assessed, and there is often, and it's, the example is given in the materials before the court, additional materials, in two places, one is the divider fifty-two, in a book on environmental impact assessment by Christopher Wood, so it's divider fifty-two, referred to in a footnote in the appellant's case, and it's, there's only one, page one hundred and seventy-nine, first page in its penultimate paragraph, whereas forecasting the magnitude of impact is a matter determining quantitative effects, the significance of impact is a matter requiring value judgement. And then there's a, on the next page, there is an example of how an approach might be taken to significance determination in the context of environmental impact assessment, and there's a matrix where the magnitude and scale of change is compared with important sensitivity of receptor. And that, and then, the only other reference is at tab fifty-five, page thirty-nine, where there's a reference to significance at paragraphs one hundred and fifteen and one hundred and sixteen of a consultation paper...
Sorry, which tab, under fifty?
Tab fifty-five, my lord.
Fifty-five, yes, one hundred and...
One hundred and fifteen and one hundred and sixteen on page thirty-nine. And that is, explains that significance in this context is a function of number of factors, value of the resource, magnitude of the impact, duration involved, reversibility of effect, number and sensitivity of receptors. Now, those are, none of these are a legal, attempted illegal definition, but an indication of the approach taken in environmental impact assessment.
When you see the logarithmic scale up the left-hand side, it's quite hard to see how this is meant to work in practice.
My lord, yes. But again, this is an example of a table which is used by environmental consultants dealing with a whole range of different effects. It might be an effect on nature conservation, it might be an effect on some other factor, water quality, hydrology, so on. And that, it's an example of how it's not possible to give a clearly defined answer to what is meant by significance, because it depends on the factors involved and the effects you're considering.
I mean, the Commission returned to this at tab forty-six, sent there, in their additional reasoned opinion, where they quarrel understandably with the conclusion of the word significant into the oh seven regulations. I mean, but they, I mean, we looked at this earlier, tab forty-six, page ten, and then they, page eleven, paragraph thirty-two, they say, not to my mind especially helpfully, the directive covers all disturbances of protected species.
Well, that, that goes back to the question which we're grappling with, what is meant by disturbance.
What's the word the French use?
We do have that, my lady, that's in...
What's that?
I was wondering what words were used in the French version, and indeed, for that matter, other versions.
We've got...
Disturbance is a funny word.
French in...
Pertubation.
It's in tab thirteen, my lady, of volume one. La perturbation, and then the Italian version in tab fourteen, perturbare, and then, we also have the Dutch version, but I'm going to hesitate to pronounce that, but I'm told that Mr Jones is an expert in that.
Versturen.
In het wild levenderspecies.
Going back, if I may, to my note, paragraph nine, what I have sought to do is to confirm the extent of agreements, there is agreement on the meaning of deliberate, there is agreement that disturbance need not be significant, there is agreement that indirect effects of development can constitute disturbance. Two issues on which there is disagreement, it appears on the written cases there are disagreement, are these, the inference to be drawn from the use of the word particularly in Article twelve one B, and whether a distinction is to be drawn between species and habitats. And, my lord, at paragraph fourteen, I set out what is understood to be the appellant's position, at fourteen point two point three, sorry, fourteen point two point one, there's a reference to appreciable interference with a protected species, and I've given the reference, but it appeared in Mr George's oral submissions that he was going back to the position he took in the Court of Appeal, which is anything above de minimis amounts to disturbance. I apologize, Mr George is finding out that in paragraph twenty-eight, it's in inverted commas, and not his position, but his position is clear now, it's anything more than de minimis. The, I've already addressed the court on the issue set out at fifteen, which is the respondent's position. As far as...
Just going back to the Court of Appeal, I mean, it isn't only thirty-seven, I mean, when you get to seventy-four, doesn't Lord Justice Ward repeat the same conclusion that is rather more extreme than you've contended for?
My lord, yes, in seventy-four, he does adopt the conclusion he came to in thirty-seven.
Yeah.
Which is, he took it a stage further than the submissions made, the submissions I made to him, but before this court, if I haven't made it plain, not saying that that wasn't a position open to him, but it's not what I, on behalf of my clients, urged on him, and I seek to maintain a consistent position.
If he was wrong, I appreciate you're not making a submission that he was wrong, but if it's concluded that he was wrong, that's the measure which he felt the council should have affirmed, judge the matter by.
Well, my lord, that is the basis on which he analysed, had the council complied with its obligations, yes, but in my submission, even if you judge the council's actions against the standard that I seek to put forward, they complied with the requirements of the regulations and directive.
Well, you'd be coming to that...
I will be. Well, if I can turn on to page four of my notes and deal with the directive itself, if I can take up volume one of the Authorities' bundle and go to tab twelve, your lordships are now familiar, I, can I make a correction to my paragraph twenty-three, because I did put L in when I should have put I in there? So that's why I...
Oh, I feel so much better.
Well, you make me feel better. The aim of the directive is in Article two, and this, in my submission, it is most important to have in mind the aim of the directive when seeking to construe the particular provisions of Article twelve one B. And I've already read out Article two two, but that is the specific aim. And I refer to the judgment of Lord Justice Ward, where he summarises the relevant parts of the preamble and relevant, and the aim in Article two, and I won't read those out. There is a distinction, as Mr George has pointed out, between protection which is given to habitats and protection which is given to species, and Articles three to eleven come under the heading Conservation of Natural Habitats and Habitats of Species. And broadly, but not exclusively, Articles twelve to sixteen are dealing with species and three to eleven are dealing with habitats. Now, there are exceptions to that general approach, I'll give example of two of them. In Article six two, this is the obligation on member states shall take appropriate steps to avoid, in the special areas of conservation, the deterioration of natural habitats and the habitats of species, as well as disturbance of the species for which the areas have been designated, insofar as such disturbance could be significant in relation to the objectives of this directive. So that is an exception to the general approach, that three to eleven deal with habitats, and it's also an example where significance is required. An example of an exception...
That's slightly curious, isn't it? Because disturbance is the same word as is used in Article twelve. Does it, does the qualification only apply insofar as such disturbance could be significant, that only apply to disturbance of the species, or does disturbance there include deterioration of the habitats? And insofar as it refers to disturbance of the species, it appears to be suggesting that only significant disturbance is relevant, whereas under Article twelve B, any disturbance, at least if deliberate is.
Well, my lord, yes, that is a clear distinction, and it is, appears that it's an intentional distinction, having looked at the draft form of the directive.
Yes, but what is the distinction? The distinction is that Article twelve B is only dealing with deliberate disturbance, whereas six two is dealing with appropriate steps to avoid any... whereas 6.2 is dealing with appropriate steps to avoid any disturbance, non-deliberate as well as presumably.
Well, that is a distinction, my lord, yes.
Yes.
And Article six is dealing with protection of special areas of conservation. So it's areas of habitat which are designated for their particular value. And going back to Article 12, there is an exception to the general rule. That's protecting species, because Article 12.1d protects a particular type of habitat, that is a breeding site or resting place. So there are exceptions to the general rule, but there is a clear distinction between habitats and species. And the reasons that that's important in this case is because, in large measure, the appellant in this case relies upon the fact that the development for which planning commission was granted would have an effect on habitat, foraging habitat.
That's right. I mean, as I was saying, I mean, that being the major disturbance, I mean, that is, I think, here put as an indirect disturbance.
It is, my lord, and I accept that it is possible to have an indirect disturbance, but there has actually to be some disturbance which is more than de minimis and less than significant. And on the facts, the loss of that particular foraging habitat did not engage, did not amount to disturbance as so defined.
When you say more than de minimis but less than significant, does that imply that you're accepting that if the disturbance is more than de minimis, that it will engage Article 12?
No, not.
It comes somewhere between those two?
Which I've attempted to seek to...
Appreciable or something of that order?
Well, it could either be appreciable, or the definition that I attempted to set out is at paragraph 101 of the, well, as amended...
As amended, yes, I'm sorry.
In paragraph eight.
I shouldn't pick you back on that, yes.
I know, but I wish I could follow where it takes one there. Because you've said, having regard to the effect on the conservation status, but even if it doesn't affect the conservation status, it could still be deliberate disturbance above de minimis.
Could be, but it would have to be decided on, depending on the species and depending on the facts. And it's not, the whole reason why Regulation 39 provides for guidance in Regulation 39, 12, and 13 is that it is not as simple as just saying this is the definition. It depends upon the nature of the species concerned.
But we haven't actually gotten the guidance in 39 yet.
Not yet, my lord, no.
They want us to help them, give it.
It would appear so, but they've done their best to try and give some help in the letter that they wrote in volume four, tab 56. Perhaps we'll come back to that.
But essentially, your case surely is that there is no definitive prescriptive guidance which can be given?
Absolutely. So it's a question, and if that is no doubt why there haven't been any cases of which either party is aware and which it has been defined.
But it's impossible to say that there is no verbal formulation which can be arrived at. Its application may vary according to the species. But if you are, Mr. George has a coherent position. He says that the only deliberate disturbance permitted is one which is de minimis. Whereas you have no, as I see it, formulation at all. You say, I suppose, appreciable is the nearest one gets, and you say that somewhere halfway between de minimis and significant. But it doesn't do much credit to the law to go on introducing endless slicing of the cake in this way, does it?
Well, Lord, appreciate the need for certainty and the need for legal certainty. But the difficulty that is faced is that it would not, in my submission, be consistent with the aim of the directive to lower the bar so low as to put it as more than, just more than de minimis.
I mean, it seemed to me that the commission's position was also coherent, although, as I read it, it's rather at the other end of the scale from Mr. George's. The commission says that you're looking for something which, rather like the Court of Appeal affects the species. And they make clear when discussing licensing that it doesn't mean the species in the whole country. You may have to recognize that some species operate on a local basis, and you look at the local population. Some species, I think they suggest, may interrelate, and you might have to look a bit wider. But that, I agree, might create a bit of obscurity. But at least it seems a coherent idea. Just to say, you don't have to affect the species as a surviving population in the area, but it must nonetheless be something more than de minimis leaves one completely uncertain as to what you're talking about.
Lord, if certainty is a pressing concern, the two certain positions are either the Court of Appeal's position or Mr. George's position. But my attempt at formulating it in paragraph eight does give, there has to be a certain negative impact.
Is it a negative impact upon a particular beast? Or is it a negative impact on the species as a whole, or a section of the species as a whole? If I wake up a bear, I disturb it.
Lady, yes.
I have quite recently woken up a bat and disturbed it. I didn't know it was there, so I don't think I committed a criminal offence. But I am very much concerned about whether if I light a fire in my chimney again, I may be committing a criminal offence. But I'm obviously having no discernible impact upon bats generally, even in the area inhabited by my house.
Well, lady, the answer to that question is the species, rather than a specimen of the species. And the reason I say that is because if you would like to turn to Article 12.1b in tab 12, volume one, there is a clear distinction drawn in A and B. Because in A, they're specimens of the species, and in B, it's the species.
That's why I was asking you the question. It seems to me to be quite important, if that is an important distinction, that we should think about it. Because a harmful effect or a appreciable detrimental effect on the species is a very different thing from killing a specimen of the species.
My lady, yes, and your ladyship won't have had a chance to read ahead. But if your ladyship goes to paragraph 30 of my speaking note, I draw attention to that distinction. And it was a distinction that Lord Justice Ward referred to. And we're back in core volume, and it's his appendix, his paragraph 28. He makes the point there that 12.1b is concerned with deliberate disturbance of the species, not a specimen of the species.
That's very clear, but at the same time, and I think this is part of the difficulty of trying to formulate it, that Mr. George made what seemed to me a very good point, that it's no good saying, well, this is only 1% or half a percent of the bats in Hampshire are going to be upset. Because if every single time you said it's only 1% or half a percent, you get a sort of death by a thousand cuts situation. So it is understandable that the test should be set high enough to prevent it, to prevent a situation in which the population is whittled down bit by bit, because each time the decision makers say, well, it's only, it's only a tiny percentage.
Well, yes, but the reference to the species must mean something more than a specimen of the species.
Well, I accept that. I was trying to just take it a little bit further than that. I absolutely accept that there's a difference between the species and a specimen of the species.
I suppose my Lord's point might be met unless all the cuts were inflicted at the same time by saying that each time the species were kind of smaller, and so the risk that the next cut might be prohibited is greater.
In the same way, slightly different context, you might say, you can't, that a road can only accommodate so much traffic, and if you add one car at a time, you will get too much.
Yes, the problem arises that way as well.
The other way around.
It's only one more, yes.
Only one less. But that can't be, if one took that approach, you'd say, well, you can't, you'd have to prohibit any act which led to the loss of one. And that's obviously not the purpose of the directive, otherwise it would use, make a reference to specimens of the species. Can I respond, as I'm on that point, to a point taken by Mr. George this morning in relation to the opinion of Advocate General Coquart, which is to be found in Authorities' Bundle, volume one, tab five. And it was in the Commission and Spain case, and it was paragraph 53 of her opinion. It does, I hope, deal with the points, relevant to the points that the George is raising. Mr. George relied on this passage to attack the approach taken by the Court of Appeal. But the words are, it is only, I'm reading from the second sentence, "is only significant adverse effects on reaching or maintaining favorable conservation status that are to be prevented", whereas the prohibitions in Article 12.1 also extend to harm that has less intensive effects because they only relate to individual specimens. And this case was dealing with Article 12.1a, which does deal with individual specimens. Whereas we are dealing with Article 12.1b, which is not dealing with individual specimens, it's dealing with the species. And therefore, it's not right to conclude from that observation, although it's true that the reference to Article 12.1 isn't qualified by adding the letter A.
But in any event, you don't have any quarrel with the proposition that less intensive effects than significant adverse effects will be sufficient to engage Article 12.1?
No, I don't.
So it may be a slightly arid debate. But I'm sorry to come back to this again. Given that, if I've understood your position, it is that it's something more than de minimis but falling less than significant. What are the words in your formulation which allows one to see where the particular calibration on the spectrum is reached? You mean, is it the words a certain negative impact? Or is it likely to be detrimental?
Well, it's the certain negative impact. It's got to be detrimental, likely detrimental to the species, that qualifies it again. So it's to the species, not to a specimen. And although, and having regard to the effect on the conservation status of the species is that in forming the view, the decision maker has to have regard to that matter. The court's already made some points in relation to that. I accept it could be, this could be made clearer by using words such as sufficiently appreciable. But actually, certain negative impact likely to be detrimental to the species is, in my submission, enough. But if it was thought not to be enough, the word sufficiently appreciable could be used.
And then you say, and you have emphasized this, you apply it on a case-by-case basis, bearing in mind the huge range of animal life of different sorts that it has to be applied to.
My lord, yes. And it is a huge range.
But if you, if the test actually relates to the species, you're probably not so worried about whether the qualitative level is above de minimis.
That was really the point I was trying to make. You know, disturbing, waking up one bear or disturbing one bat will have no appreciable effect on the species, unless it's the only bat that there is.
Lady, yes.
And then it might, depending on what you do when you disturb it.
Well, in effect, we'll have no more than a de minimis effect. That's the point.
On the species?
On the species.
And in this case, the fact that bats have to go and forage somewhere else may, on the particular facts of this case, have more than, no more than a de minimis effect on these particular bats.
Well, we tell it's got a moderate adverse impact, and it will have for nine years, whatever that means.
Well, Lord, that is, those are the words used in the, as your lordship just read them out.
But I mean, is that a certain negative impact, likely to be detrimental? I don't know. I mean, who's to say?
Well, Lord, no, it isn't, and the council were entitled to say fine. And, Lord, if, rather than just boldly asserting that, seek to explain why I make that submission.
Are you moving to issue two, or still with...
No, I was just seeking to answer that point, but I'll answer with that under issue two, if your lordship would prefer. So still on Article 12.1b, I'm seeking to distinguish between protection which is given to habitats and to species. As far as the effect of including the word particularly is concerned in Article 12.1b, I accept that all forms of deliberate disturbance of the species are prohibited. But the inclusion of the word particularly indicates that periods of breeding, rearing, hibernation, and migration require particular consideration. And I then make the submission which is where I differ from Mr. George. If an activity has an effect on the species during those periods, it is more likely to amount to disturbance. And that's because those are the particular periods which the Article 12.1b identifies. And in making that submission, I do turn to, it's not a legal authority, but the views of DEFRA. I can, it's in bundle four, tab 56.
Do you refer to this in your note or not, in this little speaking note? I haven't seen it.
I have, my lord, paragraph 36.
Paragraph what?
36. And again, this is, this is there. And again, this is, this is their view. And they say, and this is the last page, penultimate bullet point in the list. An activity that does not affect species in a way envisaged by Regulation forty-one-two is less likely to amount to disturbance for the purpose of Article twelve one B than an activity that does fall within the scope of that provision.
Right, where's forty-one-two again?
Forty-one-two is in Volume Two, no, sorry, Volume Three. And this is the two thousand and ten regulation, so it's Tab Forty-One. And forty-one-two is the provision which gives effect to the words particularly in Article twelve one B.
Well, I mean, there isn't a, I mean, the words particularly don't sort of match what's in forty-one-two, do they?
Um, well, my lord.
This, least of all forty-one-two B.
Includes in particular, it's at the beginning of.
It's, I, I know, but all I'm saying is that the, I mean, in particular, in twelve one, relates, um, relates specifically to specific times, does it not? Let me find the rest of the thing again.
It does, it's, um, Tab Twelve in.
Tab Twelve, exactly. I mean, it relates to breeding, rearing, hibernation and migration. All I'm saying is forty-one-two, although it, of course, talks of in particular any disturbance. It doesn't say during breeding, rearing, hibernation or migration, but deals with rather other aspects. Or some of the same, but not all, least of all forty-one-two B. I mean, that's my only, isn't that right?
My lord, it's not exactly the same, but as I understand this, forty-one-two is the reflection in domestic legislation of the words that appear after the comma in Article twelve one B. Because forty-one B, forty-one-one B, it reads deliberately disturbs wild animals of any such species. And that is reflecting the words that appear in twelve one B before the comma. Then the words that appear after the comma are addressed, if I can put it that way, in forty-one-two, transposed into domestic legislation.
But of course it introduces significantly again forty-one-two B.
It does, in particular, any disturbance which is likely.
But then to affect significantly, and if I've understood your submission, it's not necessary to have a significant effect?
No, it is not necessary to have a significant effect. And this wouldn't make it necessary to do so, but because it includes in particular.
I mean, when you get forty-one-two B, you're not talking about the words after the comma in twelve-one B at all. You're talking about affecting significantly the local distribution or abundance.
My lord, yes, but only disturbance of animals includes in particular any disturbance which is likely B. So it's not exclusively, it includes in particular. But the, the only submission that I seek to make on this issue is it makes it more likely to be a disturbance if it falls into one of those categories.
I mean, if it falls into a forty-one-two category at all, surely without more, you realize it is within twelve-one B.
Yes.
So I mean, all that tells you is that every time you get into forty-one-two, you have engaged twelve-one B. It doesn't tell you where you haven't.
No.
I mean, it doesn't tell you, sorry, the lesser circumstances in which you also have.
It doesn't tell you that, but it, the only submission I'm trying to make is that if you don't fall within that, you can still be caught by forty-one-one B, but you're less likely to be within forty-one-one B. Doesn't give you a precise cutoff, but it makes it less likely.
This is our response to the Commission's criticism, and the Commission hasn't returned to the charge.
Not that I'm aware of, my lord.
And, I mean, member states have a certain limited discretion as to how to transpose directives.
Yes.
And the only obligation is to have a, what a strict, strict protection prohibiting these things. System of strict protection.
Well, Mr. Cameron, I think, bearing in mind the number of paragraphs in your speaking note and the time limits, we, we better try and let you get, let you get on a bit, yes.
So I seek to set out some conclusions at forty-one to forty-six, won't repeat those. What I would like to spend a short amount of time on is, was Article twelve one B engaged on the facts of this case? There are two primary effects which the appellant lies on. Loss of foraging habitat and risk of collision with buses. And the loss of foraging habitat is covered in both the detailed environmental assessment. That was submitted first, Natural England then objected, and then the updated bat survey was submitted. The, I won't take, Mr. George has provided a list of references. If I can deal first with the foraging point, and I'll come back to Lord Brown's reference in the UBS, that is in Volume Two, Tab Nine. And it's pages two, three, three to two, three, four, paragraph nine point two point four. And it is right to say that, and this, of course, was the information before the committee, when they made their decision. The first full paragraph on page two, three, four, which begins the loss of foraging habitat, will have an adverse impact on local bats. Because of the distinction between effects on habitats and the species, loss of foraging habitat would only be capable of having an indirect effect. The impact on the pipistrelle species and seratine bats recorded will be less significant. These bats are adapted to foraging in urban environments compared to the impact on the myotis species, which prefer more natural habitats. And this is where, without mitigation, the loss of foraging habitat is anticipated to have a short-term, moderate adverse impact at a local level. And then there's a reference to the fact that after landscape planting, seven years, long-term slight adverse impact. So the question is whether the prohibition was engaged on the basis of that information. And at its highest, before mitigation, it's a short-term, moderate adverse impact. And the most prevalent species in the area were pipistrelle and seratine, which were adapted to foraging in urban environments. And because this is an indirect effect, not a direct effect, that did not engage Article twelve one B, which is concerned with disturbance of the species. And the if, court would wish me to, the only myotis species which were discovered on this survey, you can find is on Survey Two, at page two hundred and forty-nine.
Sorry, appendix?
It's in the same tab, my lord, Tab Nine, it's at page two hundred and forty-nine. The survey is Survey Two, and there are two myotis species passes recorded when myotis species are foraging. They're the ones who are likely to be more affected by loss of natural habitat. They are recorded there, and they were at tree nine. And that, if I can, turns on to page two hundred and eighty-eight. Trees are, sorry, page two hundred and seventy-eight. It's going to be very difficult for your lordships to see in this photocopy. Tree nine, tree ten is quite, um, clearly.
Circles round them.
Turned in, and tree nine is two on the map to the left, slightly to the north of tree ten. There's a circle around it. That is, that is where two myotis species were seen to pass. That was the information before the council. And it was the myotis species, it is stated on page two hundred and thirty-four, which prefer the more natural habitats. And on, and I accept that when it says the impact on the, I'm going back to page two hundred and thirty-four, the impact on the pipistrelle species and seratine bats will be less significant. Doesn't say that it won't be, won't be an effect. We know the effect is short-term, moderate, adverse. But that is not enough to amount to an indirect effect which amounts to a disturbance on the species.
I mean, that's an assertion, that's.
It is an assertion. But the nature of the, the committee or the council had to make an assessment based on this information.
I'm sorry, were we told this was on, on the web, wasn't it?
It was. But it's referred to, this report is expressly referred to in the committee report. It was, it should have been listed as a background document, and it wasn't, except that. Now, as far as traffic collision is concerned, that's dealt with at paragraph nine point two point seven, which is on page two hundred and thirty-five, page two hundred and thirty-six. There are similar paragraphs in the detailed environmental assessment, but I'm dealing with the most recent report because this report came after the DEA. Mitigation here is relevant because it's possible to take mitigation to limit the chances of collision between a bus and a bat through the provision of what are described as hopovers and, I won't turn to it now, but the lordships wanted to know what a hopover is. That is described in the Highways Agency advice, which is in Appendix, in Authorities' Bundle Four. And it is at Tab Forty-Eight. And there's a little illustration on page thirty-five, image eight point nine. And going back to the UBS, page two, three, six, with the proposed mitigation, it's probable, last sentence, there would not be a significant impact on bats at a local level due to increased risk of collision-related mortality. And the word significant is used because it may be, because that is the word that is used in environmental impact assessment. But it is, of course, not the test that applies. So on any analysis of the facts, there's an indirect effect on bats which is more significant for a particular species of bat than others through lost foraging. And there is a risk of collision which through mitigation can be reduced to a consequence which is described as not a significant impact. And therefore, no disturbance to the species. So and that is why I make the submission, I've referred to the, there could be, at paragraph fifty-seven, there could be no criticism of Lord Justice Ward's finding that disturbance in relation to the buses would be trivial. And in relation to the loss of foraging, it's an indirect effect on habitat. Lords, can I turn from Article twelve one B to Regulation three four? And Regulation three four, as it appeared in the two thousand and nine version of the regulations, is found in Authorities' Bundle Three, Tab Thirty-Seven. As I submitted at the outset of these submissions, the, the effect of the regulations is to have two layers of regulation because Regulation thirty-nine creates the criminal offence and Regulation three four requires that every competent authority in the exercise of any of their functions shall have regard to the requirements of the habitats directive. So going to paragraph sixty-one of my notes, this is an additional layer of regulation. And Mr. George in his submissions referred to the regulations as they existed before the Commission against UK case, and the, and the UK regulations had to be changed. And if I can, if I can take the court to Tab Thirty-Eight in Volume Three, the provision that was found to be offensive, or one of them, was the provision of Regulation forty-three C. Any act made unlawful by that regulation, if he shows that the act, so notwithstanding Regulation thirty-nine, a person is not guilty, if he shows any act made unlawful, shows the act was the incidental result of a lawful operation and could not reasonably have been avoided. At that time, before the regulations were changed, if a person obtained a planning permission, is then able to have a defence. is then able to have a defence to the Regulation 39 provision. Now, if that was the case, it would make it more important that particular consideration was given to the prohibition at the time that the decision was made to grant planning permission. That provision is gone, and now, whether or not you've managed to obtain planning permission, the activity of disturbing the species will be an offence if you haven't got a licence. And the relevance of that, my lords, is that it goes to the extent of the duty at the time of granting planning permission. The extent of the duty is to have regard to the requirements of the habitats directive. The history, or the history in terms of authorities on this point, starts really with the Woolley case, and that's in Volume Two, Tab 30. And I haven't forgotten the Friends of the Earth case. This is a relatively recent decision, 5th of June 2009, in which the relevant duty at the planning stage was considered by His Honour Judge Waxman, in particular at Paragraids 26 and 27, that judgment. And that case was dealing with a house in which there was a bat roost. So it wasn't a 12.1b case, but the principles are established. And in Paragraph 27, an inch or so down, if that is right, it recognises that the local authority should engage with the provisions of the directive. In my view, that engagement involves a consideration by the authority of those provisions, and considering whether the derogation requirements might be met. And before, and the submissions made in that case suggested that it was sufficient to impose a condition, you mustn't go ahead until you've got a licence, whereas the effect of this judgment is that the planning authority at the planning application stage has to engage with the provisions of the directive, a consideration by the authority of the provisions, and considering whether derogation requirements might be met. I've also referred in my speaking note and in the respondent's case to the case of Hume, which was decided in August 2010 at first instance, after the judgment in the Court of Appeal was delivered in this case. And Hume is also in Authorities' Bundle Two, at Tab 26. This was a challenge to a decision by an inspector. It's a wind farm case. And if the Court goes to Paragraph 71, there's a heading, Ground Nine Bats, at the bottom of the previous page. And the inspector, taking it as quickly as I can, Paragraph 74, inspector dealt with bats in his decision letter, its conclusion at Paragraph 66, which is set out. And the complaint was that the inspector hadn't engaged with the provisions of the directive, and it was Article 12.1a which was concerned in that case. And Paragraph 90, I particularly on...
74, there's no suggestion the turbines would constitute a threat to local bat populations, looks as if it might be dealing with 12.1b, might it?
Well, yes, but if one goes on to the habitats regulations, Paragraph 78...
Yes, he only cites A.
It's 1a, which is cited there. Because of the concern, I think, was at the height at which bats fly, they might be killed if they flew into a turbine. And then, in Paragraph 82, is the reference to the domestic legislation, which deliberately captures, injures or kills, which is Article 12.1a. And Paragraph 90, first defendant and the third defendant submitted that the inspector had engaged with the directive and Regulations as much as he needed to, as evidence in Paragraph 66 of the decision letter. It was not necessary to go further and volunteer a discussion of the Regulations. The evidence was that the inspector had carefully considered the issue. And then, there's a reference to 92, and then 93, I rely on, it follows the inspector did engage with the directive and Regulations despite not being asked to do so by any party to the inquiry. The fact that he did not identify either by name is not surprising in the circumstances. He clearly had in mind the importance of the presence of European protected species on the development site in reaching his planning decision. Now, it's quite right that here, the judge referred in Paragraph 84 to the Court of Appeal's decision in our case, in Morge. But that, Morge, this case doesn't concern 12.1a. But the submission that I seek to make is that the Regulation 3.4 does not require an exhaustive discussion of the provisions of the directive at the planning application stage. And that is because it is a two-tier system. There is Regulation 3.4 have regard to the requirements of the habitats directive, and then there is the criminal provision which imposes the prohibition. I accept that that submission and the submissions set out in writing go further than the propositions of law that were agreed in this case on the basis of Woolley between the parties. I do so on the basis of Hume, which was decided in August of this year. I also seek to make the...
I'm terribly sorry, can I just be clear how this all fits in with what, how Lord Justice Ward dealt with all this aspect of it? I mean, he, his Paragraph 61, I mean, is, I mean, is that correct or not? Mr George says it's, that's correct, as long as you read lightly in the third up line, as probable.
My lord, the, it is, I don't seek to criticise Paragraph 61. And so I'm at one with Mr George on that.
So, I'm sorry, and how does, I mean, that approach doesn't seem to have this two-stage thing, or does it?
Well, my lord...
I'm a bit lost about this two-stage thing, I confess. I mean, you say, what, doesn't matter if you grant planning permission, because there's always the 30, our Regulation 39, which puts you at risk of a criminal offence, is this it?
I don't say it doesn't matter. What I'm saying is that the extent of the duty imposed by Regulation 3.4, which is to have regard to the requirements of the directive, has to be read in light of the fact that the prohibition which is required by the directive is imposed by the criminal law. So in this country, there is a two-stage process. At the planning application stage, you have to have regard to the requirements of the directive, but that isn't the way in which the strict prohibition is achieved. The strict prohibition is achieved by a provision of the criminal law.
And you also say that when it was a defence, that what you were doing was incidental to something else that you had been allowed to do. Obviously, at the planning permission stage, it was absolutely essential to consider whether the directive would otherwise be breached.
Yes.
Because of this, of the defence to the criminal charge. Now there is no longer such a defence to the criminal charge. Most of the weight of the directive is actually carried by the criminal law rather than, and the licensing system, rather than by Regulation 3.4. That's as I understand your submission.
Yes, that is my submission.
Well, I'm just, so the last two lines of 61, is that word uncertain all right? I mean, do you say if it's improbable, what happens if they think, well, there's a 50% chance? Do they give planning permission, or what?
Well, that would only arise in a case where the prohibition was engaged. So if the prohibition is engaged, because there will be disturbance as a result of the grant of planning permission, they then have to consider, are Natural England likely to grant a licence? And in this case, the Natural England had been consulted on this very point and had not objected. So if they got to that stage, they were entitled to conclude that Natural England were likely to grant a licence. But that point wouldn't arise on the facts of this case.
But you agree with Lord Justice Ward's comment that the appropriate course is to grant conditional planning permission, do you? Conditional among anything else on the grant of a licence, if there's any doubt as to whether it's needed. Do you agree with that, Pid?
Well, that, as I understand it, is not, in the penultimate sentence, I do agree with, that if, on the other hand, it's likely that it will grant the licence, then the planning committee may grant conditional planning permission. But what I don't agree with is if that means, subject to a condition, that there has to be a licence, because you don't need to impose that, because the criminal law would stop you...
But surely Lord Justice Ward can't have meant some other condition having nothing to do with the licence, can he? It would have been quite misleading to put the word conditional in there.
I accept, my lord, he must have meant a condition, saying you can't carry out the works unless you get a licence.
What's wrong with that?
Well, the only thing that would be wrong with it is, is that an unnecessary protection because the criminal law provides the protection.
In other words, you don't need a condition because you've got to apply for a licence anyway.
Yes.
It'd be a bit odd to be giving planning permission for something you were satisfied would breach the criminal law, wouldn't it?
Yes, it would, but I'm not, that's what Lord Justice Ward is saying.
Yeah, that's the whole reason for this licence condition.
But what about the last sentence, if you don't really know what Natural England will do? Now, that sounds like a case for a possible conditional grant.
Well, it does, and it doesn't concern me in this case, because...
I know that, but never hurts.
But in general, then, if such a condition was imposed, then the, which prohibited the implementation of any works until a condition, until a licence was obtained, that would be sufficient in terms of uncertainty. If I can just...
Sorry, who brings these prosecutions?
My lord, I, can I just check on that? I don't know. Do Natural England bring them? Well, Mr White tells me it's Natural England who bring them, my lord. But I hesitate, because I don't recall whether there is, as with some prosecutions, for example for enforcement notices and things, there might be some limitation on who can bring a prosecution, but I don't think there is any actual limitation on it. It's a breach of the criminal law. But it is Natural England.
Well, Mr George's case, somebody could still bring one here.
Well, they could, and the works, as you know, have been carried out. No licence has been obtained, because the view's been taken that they don't need a licence. And if there was a breach of, if there was a disturbance, they could bring a prosecution.
Could an individual get an injunction to restrain the breach of the criminal law on behalf of the bats?
Well, I'm considering whether, when a local authority applies, it relies on Section 222 of the Local Government Act. There isn't a similar provision for an individual, so I'm struggling to see how an individual could obtain such an injunction to restrain a breach of the criminal law.
An individual could set aside the planning permission, that's the, so, well, I mean, why not, anyway?
Lords, if I can just deal with the being of have regard to in Regulation 3.4, I referred to the well-known planning cases, the City of Edinburgh case and Simpson in Edinburgh, and drew attention to, by example, Section 70, subsection two of the Town and Country Planning Act, having regard to, meaning giving consideration to. And Mr George, in his supplementary case, says that the, submits that the position is different here because of the wording of the provision in Regulation 3.4. And my answer to that is, and I'm turned to Authorities' Volume Three, Tab 37, back to Regulation 3.4, it's a, every competent authority in the exercise of any of their functions shall have regard to the requirements of the habitats directive. And the inclusion of the word requirements does not impose an additional duty, is to have regard to the requirements of. And therefore, it is similar to the obligation in Section 70, subsection two of the Town and Country Planning Act, have regard to the development plan, is give consideration In terms of the facts of this case, I've set out the position, I hope clearly enough, at 80 to 86, with the relevant references. I accept, and Mr George drew attention to it, that Paragraph 817 of the decision report, which was a reference that he had not made, is a reference to Article Six of the habitats directive. I accept that. But I have, but the only additional reference that I would wish to draw attention to, which wasn't... but the only additional reference that I would wish to draw attention to, which wasn't, I think, in his list, in the decision report of the council, and it's in the core volume, it's at page one-six-three, is paragraph nine point four.
Sorry, where, where are you now?
On page one-hundred-and-sixty-three of the core volume at tab eight.
Nine point what?
Nine point four, Lord, the reference to various policies. And in the fourth line up from the bottom, fifth line up, there will be no adverse impact for designated sites of nature conservation importance and suitable mitigation measures proposed for badgers and protected species, drawing a distinction between the badgers and the protected species. Bats have been referred to earlier as protective species, protected species at eight-nineteen, where references made to the updated bat survey method statement, references then made to the various policies, and those policies were provided for members. And if you, Lordship and Lady, would turn to page one-hundred-and-seventy-one, you'll see policy C-eighteen. And that refers specifically to species protected by the habitats regulations. That's in the, one of the local plans. And on page one-seven-two is the similar policy in the Gosport Borough Local Plan R-stroke OS thirteen, protection of habitats, supporting protected species. So the references to the policies are important because members had before them the text of the relevant policies and they were referred to them. Just before turning to discretion, my last five minutes, the court has set out a, an approach to exercise of discretion in judicial review cases in Barclay. And I refer to that, my speaking note at page ninety-six as being the starting point, but that was concerned with the EIA directive, and the procedure under EIA requires public involvement. In Bogus was a case concerned with Article six of the habitats directive, not Article twelve. But in that case, Lord Justice Sullivan, given the reference, distinguished the process of appropriate assessment under Article six from the procedure in the EIA directive, because there isn't the same need for public participation. The, if there is a breach in this case, it's not a breach of a requirement which involved participation of the public and can therefore be distinguished from Barclay. The next submission at one-hundred-point-two and one-hundred-point-three is perhaps slightly bolder, but it's not a breach of the requirements of the directive itself if there is a breach. It will be a breach of the domestic legislation, the domestic requirement under Regulation three-four. And the breach is one of form, not of substance. And the reason I submit that is because the effect on bats was considered in very great detail. There was a whole additional report prepared following the objection by Natural England. The fact that Natural England objected and then withdrew their objection, I should have added at one-hundred-point-four, third line, is an indication that in all probability, if a derogation was needed, it would be granted. And on that basis, even if the simplex and Smith approach is taken, it could be said that the decision would inevitably have been the same. If the Respondents' Regulatory Committee had asked itself the question, would Natural England probably grant a licence? And that is at the time in July two thousand and nine. Now, in my last couple of minutes, Mr George referred to the position now in relation to discretion. He referred to the fact that an application had been made to register part of the triangle by Titchborne Lane as a village green. That application has not yet been determined. It is still being considered by the council as Commons Registration Authority, separate regulatory function. And of course, the other factor to be taken into account, if the decision is to be, if discretion is to be considered on the position now, is the fact that much of the foraging habitat, which is of the concern of the appellant, has been removed. And my lords, if I can, there is a, there are some, as Mr George has referred you to the position now, I do have a witness statement with photographs of the site as it is now. I would normally be reluctant to put that in because it may be said, and I accept this, that there should be no encouragement to those who carry out development at risk when it's subject to a judicial review. But if the court is inclined to consider the position now, it shouldn't just consider the fact that an application has been made for a village green, it should consider the whole picture.
Well, I'm inclined to think that what we should discourage is, is the endless slipping in of little bits of further evidence in, in, into appeals to this court. And unless you, you think very strongly about, about it, I, I think we, we can all have a fairly good idea of what the site looks like now.
I don't, my lords. So those, those are my submissions. In summary, Article twelve-one-B was not engaged, no breach of Regulation three-four. If you're against me on those, this is one of those rare cases where, on the basis that it was inevitable that the committee would have reached the same decision, discretion could be exercised in favour of the respondent counsel.
Thank you very much, Mr Cameron. Mr White?
Yes, Mr George.
Thank you.
So far as the interpretation, what is critical is that one has a clear test which can be applied by all those who have to apply it and which the public can understand. There's plainly a difference between a legal test of what is disturbance and the question of all the facts as to whether, in respect of the particular creature concerned, there was an impact more than de minimis. The important thing for this court is to define the test. First, we have a test to relieve a bodily harm, but when you have it, you then got to consider the individual person or the individual incident, decide whether it was free of bodily harm. But this court should be capable of devising a test, and indeed, everyone is entitled to that test, and it cannot be that the test under Article twelve-one-B is incapable of being defined. If there are difficulties in defining it, then that makes the case for a reference. And of course, as it seems to be, you have got differing views. This is going to be applied on a European-wide scale, the habitats directive, and one of the points of references is to make sure that member states are all applying the same test. An advantage of the proposition I have put forward is that it is undoubtedly a perfectly clear and understandable test. I take entirely Lady Hayles' point, but, and indeed, Mr Cameron's, about the distinctions between specimen and the species, the one-off disturbance of one animal, probably the de minimis in any event. Don't believe it applies on the facts of this case, where all the facts on that sheet, which I put in this morning, one sees that it is a number of creatures, the species, therefore, are being affected, impacted on detrimentally, and therefore, that particular distinction doesn't matter. Could I just remind the court of one passage which has not been previously referred to in Authorities Bundle four, tab forty-nine, which is the Natural England document? Just briefly go to that. Lady Hayles, page forty-nine, and to page ten, where the passage which I think is quoted in my, in the appellant's case at paragraph three, in paragraph of meaning hibernation sites containing more than fifty bats. You see, the viewer expressed that sites even used by five to ten individuals are significant. Now, of course, this report was written in the context of what was significant matter because this is the two thousand and seven regulations. But, but one may want to, this was guidance given under, in relation to two thousand and seven regulations, as we can see from page one, but we don't even have the test of significance now. The fact is on, even when you've got five to ten, that is regarded as something capable of being significant, and you've got the Commission's very clear view in the reasoned opinion, that is, that one was not concerned with significant groups of bats, you didn't need that, less than that. So whilst one is ever simply with Lady Hayle and her one bat, we're not really in that situation on the facts which we have. So far as whether the habitats directive has to be enforced in a criminal manner, the answer that must be no. It could have been done by having some civil actions. It could have been done by requirements as under EIA, which you can't go ahead with certain matters until you carry out certain further assessments. There are various ways you can deal with the matter. It happens that in this country, it's been done in a criminal way, and it is very important that that have been done, that one has got a system which can be understood. If I could then take the court back to Article, turn to the habitats directive, so, and to Article one, it, it is tab twelve in Authorities Bundle four. Just reminding all of this, that all species which are in Annex four are going to fall into a category of being vulnerable where, or in particular, risk under a particular category two, three, four, two, two, three and four. Those which are endangered are going to get their asterisk if we haven't got it. All these species which aren't asterisks are already in a position where there is concern for their future wellbeing. And that, we would submit, is why there is not an additional test to be added to Article twelve-one-B, that you are actually endangering their long-term conservation status. The matter is very important, the point I made on the injunction proceedings, that if one had as a test such as that of Lord Justice Ward, it is going to put our protected species, our European protected species, at great risk. It will be possible to direct torchlight at them on strong beams and create loud noise near them. And no one will prosecute positively, said, how could we prove that the status of the species as a whole, its conservation status, was affected? And that, of course, is why Natural England haven't prosecuted in the present proceedings, because given the justicary judgment of Lord Justice Ward, Hampshire would have a complete defence. They would say, look, the portentee has decided that there is not disturbance here because there's no evidence that the long-term status of the species is affected. There's nothing really can turn on that particular point. But you'll always need, let's say, a clear test, there is a simple test, and everything in the Commission's reasoned opinion, and that was a reasoned opinion of lawyers, I have to remember that the guidance document, I don't know who, who wrote that, that the NRO is its most recent considered opinion on the matter, and that is that it applies to any disturbance to which we have made the allowance, but plainly, it will not include the de minimis, the example of shooing off the wolf, which is the example of they themselves gave. Lords, so far as twelve, the transposition of twelve-one-B into the regulations, we have considerable sympathy with the point which Lord Brown was making, that an additional matter, in particular, a little additional matter seems to have come into our regulations. That was also the view of Lord Justice Ward in paragraph thirty-four of his judgment. But it matters not for the present case, because it's only a question of in particular, it doesn't say exclusively in. So that even if the draftsmen has heard in drawing attention to significance in a meaningful way, I'm not persuaded that the matter is of a general effect to watch those now. As I said, I do draw attention to paragraph thirty-four. What is important, though, is that there is a sufficient system of strict protection. I then move to the Article three-four matter. Just by the Regulation three-four matter, reminding the justices that that section, Regulation three, is included in the two thousand and nine regulation's implementation of directive. And in the two thousand and ten regulations, has got a slightly, because the wording is the same of the provision, it has a new fitting, which is exercise of functions in accordance to the habitats directive. So it is by way, see, as being part of the implementation of the directive. Now, Mr Cameron has conceded that Lord Justice Ward was correct in the summary of the law, which is contained in paragraph sixty-one of the judgment. They've all applied that test. There is no evidence at all that minds were directed to whether the development would have been twelve-one-B, and you have no evidence at all that members thought that it has worked in this way. We read the reports, although they refer to quite a lot of impacts, we think actually they are relatively trivial, and therefore, we fall as in that Article twelve-one-B, that strict protection isn't engaged. There is a case at all in the report, that that, that was their view. Nor is there any indication that they took the view, well, it's not too serious whether there is or isn't disturbance, because it will be looked after at the licensing stage by Natural England, and it's pretty clear there's an overriding imperative interest of public importance. You can't find any of that in the report. As I understand it, Mr Cameron says that it's simply, it is simply As I understand it, Mr Cameron says that it's simply, it is simply so obvious that the impacts of bats were negligible, that there was no need to go further. But of that, I simply ask the Royal Lordships my days to read that document I handed in this morning. That makes it a punctual complaint that the experts were accepting that there was considerable disturbance of bats. And that is why we say war was needed and the decision settled down. Lastly, if I could just turn to the discretion matters, and I turn to Mr Cameron's hopeful paragraph one hundred. On one hundred and one, I've already addressed that before the Court. So in practice, in the consideration of a planning application, there are requirements for the public to participate. And therefore, in considering discretion, the Lordships do have to consider whether members of the public have been deprived of the opportunity to make their representations in relation to Article twelve one B and disturbance. So far as one hundred and two, it's really not enough to say the prohibition imposed by Article twelve one B still applies. The fact of the matter is that as a result of this prohibition, fairly devastating work has gone on destroying a habitat of the bats along two-thirds of the four point seven metre area. And we say that that was a breach. It is a breach until such time as there is a licence. So far as one hundred and three, it's very difficult to say that Regulation three four is solely a requirement of domestic legislation. It is plainly intended that drawn to the Lord Justice's attention to the headings of the provision in which three four comes, to the pass and parcel of the implementation of the directive. It is plainly not a breach of form over there. You can have breaches of form over there, where you have advertised a matter, for instance, but there's no evidence that there's anyone who would have spoken up. You have a number of breaches of form over there. This was a failure to consider the requirements of Article twelve one B. That being said, regardless of whatever natural England supposes, one has a breach. There is no evidence whatsoever that Natural England has ever turned their mind to the correct interpretation of Article twelve one B. We simply don't know what their interpretation is. And there's no evidence that they have considered whether a derogation would be appropriate if there was a disturbance. That matter has never been put to the point. In those circumstances, we say that by simplex and Smith, the Court cannot possibly say that the results would be inevitably the same. Reminding the Lordships of Justice May, the Court is against the case, attempting to judge the limits of the case in a situation where it's impossible as a people have many matters.
The Court are very grateful to the Council for their written and oral submissions, which we will take time to consider our decisions.